Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the public hearing that is being held via Zoom teleconference. If you notice on the screen, there is an agenda that is posted. My name is Michelle Cook and I am the Legislative Manager within the Office of Legislative Services for the Legislative Branch. Number one, welcome introductions. Two, the purpose of the public hearing. Three, presentation on Navajo Nation's School Board Apportionment Plan. Resolution number H E H S C A P dash zero five dash two zero. Four, public hearing guidelines. Five, open to the public for comments, recommendations regarding to Navajo Nation's School Board Apportionment Plan. Please note, there is no derogatory comments as all comments are considered public record. Please state your name and organizations represented it if applicable for the record and state your reason or comment. Six, close of public hearing. I'd like to make a note to have everyone please mute your phones if you are not speaking. This is just to ensure that there's no background noise when we do hear the individuals that are making a comment. Thank you so much, I appreciate it. As I have already introduced myself, I will go ahead and turn the floor over to Mr. Matthew So. Mr. So?
Good afternoon, good afternoon, everyone. My name is Matthew So. Shere Matthew So, Tachin, Chavah, Hapachin, Kethachini, Dashonala, Ashin, Dashochay, Cedagunda, Dashogando, Cedagundet, Ahyasanasha. And I'm here to assist and help with the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. So. So we'll go on to the next item on the agenda, which is the purpose of the public hearing. The purpose of this hearing is, or hearings, is primarily for the purposes of getting input and comments on Plan Six. The court has approved the plan but is requiring more input and comments from the public. Plan Six summarized. Plan Six has five agencies listed. Central, Eastern, Fort Defiance, Northern, and Western. The plan shows the list of schools in each of the agencies on the left-hand column. On the right-hand column, all of the chapters represented are listed. Most school boards represent more than one chapter except the schools in the satellite community, excuse me, except the schools in the satellite chapters. There are single and at-large positions in each agency. Central Agency. There will be two school boards, each representing more than one school, each board consisting of five members. There will be a total of ten school board, eight, school board members in the agency. Eastern Agency. There will be six school boards, three representing more than one school and more than one chapter. The other three will be the schools in the satellite communities, each with their own school board, chapter-based. Each board will consist of five members with a total of thirty school board members in the agency. Fort Defiance. There will be two school boards, each representing more than one school and more than one chapter. Each board will consist of five members totaling ten members in the agency. The Northern Agency. There will be three school boards, two representing more than one school, each with five members. Navajo Prep will have its own school board with four members at large by agency. Each of the three school boards will represent more than one chapter. All positions are at large except Shiprock Chapter will have two members. There will be a total of fourteen school board members in the Northern Agency. Western Agency. There will be three school boards, two representing more than one school, each with five members. Richfield Residential Hall will have its own board with five, with four members. All positions in agency will be elected at large from assigned chapters. What is a school board apportionment plan? A school board apportionment plan determines the number of positions on a school board. The plan takes into account the number of schoolchildren and chapters to be represented. Here are two provisions from the Election Code regarding this. The apportionment plan shall be based at a minimum on the number of students attending from one or more chapters. Each local community school board shall provide to the Health, Education, and Human Services Committee and the Division of the Net Education current and accurate information regarding the number of students attending the local community school for use in development of the apportionment plan by October 2003 and every four years thereafter. This is according to Navajo Nation Code 11 N N C subsection 11 D. The Health, Education, and Human Services Committee shall apportion the number of school board seats among the chapter or chapters represented in each local community school board. This apportionment shall establish election precincts for each local community school board containing approximately equal number of students attending the local community school at the time of the apportionment. This is according to Navajo Nation Code 11 N N C subsection 11 B cited in part. What types of schools are covered under apportionment plans for schools under the Election Code? Generally, those funded or operated by the Bureau of Indian Affairs, Bureau of Indian Educations. Here's what the Election Code says. Local community school board. Members of a local community school board who are elected pursuant to the Navajo Nation Election Code. Local community school board members include those members elected to the governing boards of schools operated or funded by the Bureau of Indian Affairs, B I E, for the education of Navajo children within the Navajo. By the Bureau of Indian Affairs, B I E. Excuse me, please mute your phones. As I was saying, but does not include members of the school boards for private parochial and state public school. This is according to Navajo Nation 11 N N C subsection 1 X. When and how often is the school board apportionment plan adopted? The Election Code requires that school board apportionment plans be adopted every four years. Here is the law from the Election Code. Honor before the first Monday of November 2003 and every four years thereafter, the Health, Education, and Human Services Committee of the Navajo Nation Council shall set the size of each local community school board and shall apportion the number of school board seats among the chapter or chapters represented in each local community school board. This apportionment shall establish election precincts for each local community school boards containing approximately equal numbers of schools attending the local community school at the time of apportionment. This is according to Navajo Nation Code 11 N N C subsection 11 B cited in part. What does consultation mean for plans of developing and adopting a school board apportionment plan? In the development of a school board apportionment plan, there is a requirement of consultation. Essentially, the Election Code defines consultation as such. Consultation means notice of the proposed school board apportionment plan and an opportunity to comment on the proposed apportionment plan. The consultation is sixty days. During this time, public input is provided for as well as hearings and opportunities to submit written comments. Public input. There must be opportunity for input provided to the Navajo Board of Election Supervisors, parents, local school boards, chapters, school board organizations such as the agency school boards, and the Navajo Division of the Net Education. This input can either be in writing or through oral testimony. Hearings. Although hearings are not required, the Health, Education, and Human Services Committee can hold hearings at the schools, chapters, communities, or agencies affected by the proposed reapportionment plan. If hearings are held, there can be reasonable restrictions imposed at these hearings, such as length for time for testimony. This is according to Navajo Nation Code 11 N N C subsection 1 H. Written comments. Written comments can be provided by those that are interested in submitting them. How many members can make up a school board? Three to seven members. Here's what the Election Code says. A local community school board shall consist of not less than three nor more than seven members based upon the current adopted apportionment plan. This is according to Navajo Nation Code 11 N N C subsection 11 A. Who must approve a school board apportionment plan? Under the Navajo Nation Election Code, the Health, Education, and Human Services Committee of the Navajo Nation Council approves the final school board apportionment plan. This is according to Navajo Nation Code 11 N N C subsection 11 B. What happens after Health, Education, and Human Services Committee approves and adopts a school board apportionment plan? It is then submitted to the Navajo Board of Education Supervisors for use in these elections. In regards to the consultation for public input, that is why we are hosting the meetings for in-person and also having these Zoom meetings scheduled from one o'clock to three o'clock. If you'd like to submit it in writing, please submit your written comments to the Health, Education, and Human Services Committee. Attention, School Board Apportionment. Peel Box 670, Winter Rock, Arizona 86515. Your comments can also be faxed to 928-871-7474. And an email is also available. Going back to the agenda, I will turn the floor over to Mr. Matthew So regarding the presentation on the Navajo Nation School Board Apportionment Plan. Mr. So?
Good afternoon, everyone. As mentioned earlier, there, this is the Health, Education, and Human Services Committee of Plan Six that was approved. And the resolution number that's associated is H E H S C A P dash zero five dash twenty. And the attachment that's been provided and displayed is called Plan Six. Plan Six was adopted by the Health, Education, and Human Service Committee on April fifteenth of 2020. And again, for the purposes of this hearing, the purpose is to try to collect additional input and comment regarding Plan Six. The first agency that's listed is called Central Navajo Agency. The first school board that is listed is called Central Navajo Schools K-12, and it is a five-member board. The following schools are listed under Central Navajo School. Rocky Ridge Boarding School, Cottonwood Day School, Many Farms High School. It is a five-member school board with the following school board seats. One school member representing Chinlea Chapter. Two school board members representing, representing Many Farms Chapter. And one at-large school member representing Round Rock and Rough Rock Chapters. The last seat in that school board is an at-large school board seat representing Tachy, Blue Gap, Whippoorwill, Tetlani Cottonwood Chapters. The next school board that is listed is called Chinlea Navajo Schools K-12. It is a five-member school board with the following schools. Black Mesa Community School, Rough Rock Community School, Nazlini Community School, Lakatjukai Community School, Pinion Community School, and Many Farms Community School. It's a five-member school board with the following school board seats. One at-large with Lakatjukai, Salie, Wheat Hills, Round Rock Chapters. One at-large position representing said, Many Farms Chapters. The next seat is a board member representing Chinlea Chapter. The next is a school board seat at-large representing Hard Rock, Pinion, Forest Lake, and Black Mesa Chapters. And the last school board seat in this school board is an at-large position representing Whippoorill, Tachy, Blue Gap, Nazlini, Tetlani, Cottonwood Chapters. The total number of school boards for this agency is ten. The next agency that is listed is Eastern Navajo Agency. The first school that is listed, listed is called Shush Patrol Schools K-12. It is a five-member school board with the following schools. Brett Springs Day School, Chechitla Jones Ranch Community School, and Wing Gate K-12 Schools. It is a five-member school board with, with the following school board seats. One at-large board position representing Chechitla, Bahalé, Tetlichi, Manilito, and Sayatouo Chapters. The next is a school board position representing Church Rock Chapter. The next is a school board position representing Ayambato Chapter. The next is an at-large board, board member representing Pinedale and Mariana Lake Chapters. And the last school board position is an at-large seat representing Theru, Baka, Prewick, Smith Lake Chapters. The next school board is, that is listed is called Tisosa Cranpoint Schools. It is a five-member school board with the following schools. Baka, Goyaja Community School, Lake Valley Navajo School, Ahet Community School, Mariana Lake Community School, Debe Yajahapitino Breaka Pass School, Oho Encino Day School, Peppa Pentado Community School, Tisosa Billtop Community School. It's a five-member school board with the following school board seats. One board member representing Baka Prewick Chapter. One at-large board member representing Pinedale, Mariana Lake, Smith Lake, and Theru Chapters. The next is an at-large board member representing Ahet, Nahodish Gis, Lake Valley, White Rock, and Cranpoint Chapters. The next school board position is an at-large position representing Counselor, Oho Encino, Peppa Pentado Chapters. And the last school board position is an at-large seat representing Bassinti, Little Water, Casemara Lake, and White Horse Chapters. The next school board that is listed is called Eastern Navajo Schools. It is a five-member school board with the following schools under it. Nutlajin, Jolta, Ortorion Day School, Tethnow, Dethi Community School, and Hanat Glen Community School, Dormitory. It's a five-member board with the following school board seats. Two school board members representing Torion Chapter. Two school board members representing Orfano Chapter. And one board member representing Naizi Chapter. The next school board that is listed is Alamo Navajo School Board. It is a five-member school board with all five school board members representing Alamo Chapter. The fifth school board that is listed is Raymond Navajo School Board or Pine Hill School. It is a five-member school board with all five school board members coming out of Raymond Navajo Chapter. And the sixth school board that is listed for Eastern Agency is Tohajula Community School. It is a five-member school board with all five school board members coming out of Tohajula Chapter. The total number of school board members for Eastern Agency is thirty. The next agency is Fort Defiance Agency. The first school board that is listed is called Sehotoe, Sehotoe One, Fort Defiance Schools. And it is a five-member school board with the following school board, following schools. Pine Hill, Pine Springs Day School, Seba Delkai Boarding School, Jettaza Elementary School, and Crystal Boarding School. It's a five-member school board with the following school board seats. One board member at-large representing Red Lake Crystal Chapters. One board member representing Whippoorill Chapter. One school board member representing Low Mountain Chapter. One school board member representing Tisso Chapter. And the last at-large board member representing Lop, Lopson, Hawk, and Nahat Adziel Chapters. And the next school board seat is called Sehotoe Two, Fort Defiance Schools. The following schools are under that school board. Hunter's Point Boarding School, Wide Ruins Community School, Kin Dathich Wulka, Dilcon Community School, Grace Wood Springs Community School, Chushka Community School, Tisakken Residential Hall, and Winslow Residential Hall. It is a five-member school board with the following school board seats. One at-large board member representing Naschidi, Tohachi, Coyote Canyon, Bahaskla, and Mexican Springs Chapters. The next is an at-large board member representing Fort Defiance St. Michael's Chapter. The next is an at-large board member representing Oak Springs, Hawk, Lopson, Nahat Adziel, and Wide Ruins Chapters. The next position is an at-large board member representing Steamboat, Kin Dathichi or Kinthichi, Ginado, Clagato, Cornfields, and Wide Ruins Chapters. And the last school board position is an at-large member representing Grace, Whitebone, Dilcon, Jetto, and Tistos Chapters. The total number of school boards for Defiance Agency and.
This is too much information.
Next school board, that agency is Northern Navajo Agency. The first school board that is listed is called Northern Navajo School. It is a five-member school board, following schools. Cove Day School, Sinasti Day School, Baklabado Day School, Tohale Community School, Aneth Community School, Tisnaspas Community School, Ninhahanzad Community School, and Red Rock Day School. It is a five-member school board with, with the following school board seats. One at-large board member representing Aneth, Red Mesa, Tothlicun, and Mexican Water Chapters. The next is, next school board member is an at-large seat representing Tisnaspas, Baklabado, Gadiyahet, Tocone, and Cedacan Chapters. The next is an at-large board member representing Cove and Red Valley Chapters. The next school board seat is an at-large board member representing Sinasti, Choga Hills, Toidlina, and Newcom Chapters. And the last school board seat is an at-large position representing Shiprock, Ninhahanzad, Upper Fruitland, and San Juan Chapters. The next school board that is listed is called Natsaninah Schools K-12. It is a five-member school board with the following schools, schools under it. Shiprock Associated Schools, Kin Tia Residential Campus, and San Tsaras Ahet Dinepo Otkat, or Rock Point Community School. It is a five-member school with, school board with, with the following school board seats. Two school board members representing Shiprock Chapter. One at-large school board member representing Rock Point and Round Rock Chapters. The next is an at-large board member representing Gadiyahet, Tocone, and Cedacan Chapters. And the last seat is an at-large board member representing Sinasti, Choga Hills, Toidlina, and Newcom Chapters. And the last school board that is listed is Navajo Preparatory School. It is a four-member school board with the following school board seats. One at-large representing Northern Navajo Agency. One at-large with Eastern Navajo Agency. One at-large with Fort Defiance Agency. And the last position is an at-large board member representing Chinlea Navajo Agency and Western Navajo Agency. The total number of school board members in, in this plan is fourteen. And the last agency is Western Navajo Agency. The first school board is called Tonanas Desert Tubus City Schools One, K-12. It is a five-member school board with the following schools under it. Denoho To boarding school, Tonalia Day School, Kaibito Boarding School, Keienta Community School, and Tubus City Boarding School. It is five-member school board with the following school board seats. Two school members at-large representing Tonalia, Tonanas Desert Chapters. One board member at-large representing Sapi Kin and Kaibito Chapters. The next is an at-large board member representing Butterway Gap, Coal Mine Canyon, and Cameron Chapters. And the last seat is an at-large position representing Keienta, Boljeto, Denoho To, and Cheechimbedo Chapters. The next school board that is listed is called Tonanas Desert Tubus City Schools Two, K-12. It is a five-member school board with, with the following schools. Little Singre Community School, Natisan Community School, Cheechimbedo Community School, Kenclana Border Town Dormitory, Loop Schools Incorporated, Gray Hills Academy High School, and Shanto Preparatory School. It is a five-member school board with, with the following school board seats. Two school, two, two, two school board members are at-large representing Tonalia and Tonanas Desert Chapters. The next is an at-large board member representing Sapi Kin, Kaibito, and Shanto Chapters. The next school board seat is one at-large representing Keienta, Boljeto, Denoho To, Cheechimbedo, and Natisan Chapters. And the last school board seat is an at-large board member representing Loop, City To, Bird Spring, and Bonnie Lake Chapters. The last school board that is listed is, is Richfield Residential Hall. It is a four-member board with the following school seats. One at-large with Tonanas Desert, Tubus City, Butterway Gap Chapters. One board member at-large representing Denoho To, Keienta Chapters. The third seat is an at-large board member representing Boljeto. The last school board that is listed is an at-large board position representing Tachi, Kaibito, Natisan, and Shanto Chapters. The total number of school board members in this apportionment plan is fourteen for Western Navajo Agency. And that concludes the presentation on the Plan Six, the School Board Apportionment Plan.
Thank you, Mr. So. Going back to the agenda, we are now on number four, the public hearing guidelines. Please mute your phones to deter the background noise. I will also go ahead and open to, or excuse me, number five, open to public comments and recommendations. Please state your name, your organization that you're representing for the record. State your reason, your comment, or your recommendation. No derogatory comments as all comments are considered public record. You will have five minutes to state the comment. So if you will, I will open it up to the public right now. Is there anyone who would like to state a reason or provide a comment or recommendation at this time?
Good afternoon, this is Maxine Cook from the Raymond Navajo School Board.
Good afternoon, Maxine. You have five minutes.
Okay, um, thank you for the presentation. Thank you for the public hearing that you're, that Hesse and the Navajo Nation is providing to the public. I think Plan Six was discussed. I oppose and do not approve of Plan Six. I believe that as a Raymond Navajo school board and for other, for the other school, they're a community-controlled school. We know our vision of the schools, which are governed by our own community members that are operated by, by our own community members. And we teach our students our own community members. So, and we receive the B I E funding from B I A. And for that reason, I, um, I would like for Hesse and the Navajo Nation to please respect the rights of the voters and the citizens of the Navajo Nation and know that they have wants and needs and rights. And so for that, I oppose Plan Six. Thank you.
Thank you, Maxine. Is there anyone else who would like to state a reason or a comment or a recommendation at this time? Is there anyone else who would like to state a reason or a comment or a recommendation at this time? Is there anyone who would like to provide a comment or a recommendation or state a reason at this time? Is there anyone that would like to provide a comment or a recommendation or state a reason at this time?
Hello, this is David Gomez. Can you hear me?
Hello, Mr. Gomez. Yes, we can. You have five minutes, sir.
Okay, I don't have a recommendation or a comment, but I, I do have a question about what the legal basis is for consolidation of the school boards into regional, into regional, into regional school boards.
Do we have anyone from Office of Legislative Council on the line who might be able to answer that question? Is there anyone from Office of Legislative Council that will be able to assist us? Good afternoon. Sorry, Mr. Gomez. At this time, it does not seem like there is any individuals from Office of Legislative Council. But I will, I did take that note and I will go ahead and forward that question to Office of Legislative Council.
Okay. Also, I have a question regarding the votes that were cast. Uh, the court in its decision, most recent decision in the Chavez case said that voters would be allowed to withdraw their votes once they see what the plans are. And I'd like to know what the legal basis is for permitting people to withdraw their votes once they've been cast.
Okay, sir, I have noted that question as well.
Another question I have is how this Plan Six allocates seats for local community school boards based on enrollment figures as required by eleven NNC eleven, which doesn't mention anything at all about consolidated or regional boards. It refers to allocation of numbers for local community school boards. So, uh, we'd also like to find out how, how this plan meets with, with that requirement of section of eleven NNC, section eleven. Did you catch?
Okay, Mr. Gomez, yes, I did note those questions that you did have. And I will, I did request for assistance from Office of Legislative Council. I'm not sure if Mr. So, Matthew So has any kind of information he might be able to share with you.
Uh, I'm also wondering if Dody is willing to release its calculations on apportionment based upon the enrollment numbers for each school. Also whether these were based on, on twenty twenty enrollment numbers.
Uh, Mr. Gomez, from what I recall, that the court had addressed the issue of consolidation when it did make its ruling. And then the process as was identified was that the schools were identified using what the apportionment law does require, which is student enrollment, chapter affiliation, and the numbers are tallied up accordingly. And the numbers all were derived out of the NASIS system, which is all provided at the school level by, by all, all the schools. So the information that was collected and provided for was collected directly from the schools through, through NASIS. And that identified the chapter affiliation. So the only two criteria that were used, as I recall in the calculation of the plan, was data that was derived from the apportion plan or derived from NASIS.
Will you release your formula to show how these enroll numbers were used to calculate the apportionment of seats for local school boards?
Uh, I, I, I have, I think we'd have to go back, but possibly, I, I don't know. I had to probably get permission on that. But I, I'm sure I really can't answer it right now.
Okay, and also how the leap was made from apportionment for local school boards to creation of regional school boards?
I, I really can't answer that question, but all I can say is that as far as like the instructions on the portion plan, the, the different options were provided to the committee. You had Plan One, Plan Two, Plan Three, Plan Four A, Four B, Five A, Five C, and Plan Six, which identified a multiple, multiplicity of different options regarding school board configurations. And those options, the committee narrowed the decision down to Plan Four A and Plan Six.
Okay, but how is the math done to go from, uh, to do what the statute requires, which is to apportion seats for local school boards? And then how was the math done to apportion seats for newly created regional school boards?
As identified in the apportion plan, there was a name, the school board name that was given, a list of schools, and the school board names were aligned. And based on that, the chapter affiliations were identified. So it uses what the law has requires, which is the chap, the student enrollment tallied up, chap, chapter affiliation, and you get, you get, you get numbers based on that.
Now, for local school boards, correct?
Yes.
And then how were these local school board figures converted into the regional school boards?
I think I just explained that answer already.
Hmm, I don't think you did, uh, cause, cause you know, we're talking about two different things here. We're talking about something that the statute requires, which is apportionment for local school boards. But what we're actually talking about today is the, is, uh, is a public comment on regional school boards. So what, what is the formula that was followed to create regional school boards and making sure that enrollments were, were properly apportioned across that?
Uh, Mr. Gomez, I'm, I'm not going to get into some of the thesis, cause that, that's already been settled by the court. And I, I'm, I'm not going to get into a legal discussion on stuff like this, cause I, I think I know where you're going and I'm not going to go there.
Okay, well, I think the people are entitled to know this, the people who will be uh, making public comments on, on this. Also, uh, there was some rumors about there being a sixty-day consultation period rather than the fifty-two days ordered by the court, which is going to be?
As has been expressed by the committee, that the, instead of fifty-two, they are intended to go with a full sixteen.
Okay. If Plan Six is adopted and goes into place, regarding the employees of, of the current school boards, who will be their employer then? Uh, will their employer be the regional school boards?
Uh, Mr. Gomez, from what I understand, the schools, a, a, as they are, stay intact. The only change is governance. The, the policies, procedures all remain the same. For the school, the contracts, all that remains the same. The school board is.
So the regional school boards will be looking at and following all the individual personnel policies and contracts for each of the schools within their control. Is that it?
As I understand, that's, that each school has their own individual policy procedure. The only change is regarding the role of school board. I, I believe the process you're talking about, about dissolving grants or combining, that's, that's, that's a whole separate other process and that's aside from apportionment.
Yeah, but what is the, what is going to happen with that? Will the, the grants be consolidated into the, into the regional uh, schools, uh, school boards, or will they continue to be, will the individual schools be, be the grantees?
Uh, that based on, based on what has already been presented, the intent is very clear. And that's that schools are to retain their own in, individual status of school. The only change is the, the composition of school board overseeing those schools. But each school has their own governing policy procedure. The only change again, as mentioned, is who the school board is.
Okay. Once again, we look forward to seeing what the legal basis is for consolidation. As you know, we're talking about eleven NNC eleven. There's no mention of consolidation in that statute. So we're looking forward to seeing what, uh, Dody and Heshi have to say about what the legal basis is for consolidation under Plan Six.
Thank you, Mr. Gomez. Is there anyone from Legislative Council on the call at this time? I'm sorry, Mr. Gomez. Um, it does not look like there's anyone on the call at this time regarding the Legislative Council request. So I have noted your information and perhaps we will have an individual join us later on.
Okay, if not, we have a full comment period and we'll be submitting these comments and writing also for consideration by the committee.
That is correct, Mr. Gomez. Is there anyone else who would like to provide comment?
I just want, I just wanted to say thank you for the opportunity to raise these questions.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to provide a comment, a recommendation or state a reason at this time?
Hello.
Hello.
This is, uh, Kirby Johnson with Kintil Residential Campus.
Hello, Mr. Johnson. You have five minutes, sir.
Okay, as I recall, I know prior years before they started doing the reapportionment plan, Angie Barney-Ness with the Bozba and everybody was aware of the plan being submitted every four years and we were told to forgive my verbiage, but beat the bushes to get enrollment to help keep the status as the way it is. And I just wanted to clarify that and it was stated before. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Is there anyone else who would like to provide a reason or state a comment or recommendation at this time?
Good afternoon.
Hello.
Hello. My name is Vera Morgan. I am.
Hello, Ms. Morgan. You have five minutes.
Thank you very much. Um, I'm the school board president at Wingate Elementary and Wingate High School. And with the, with, I just do like to do a comment in reference to the Plan Six apportionment plan for the school board. I really don't see a reason why we have to do this apportionment plan. It is not going to change the attendance for our children that are attending school. It's not going to change the testing or assessment results for our children that are attending the school. However, it may make some difference maybe with the finances, but each school has their own budget. Each school gets their money according to the student count during the count week. How is that going to be better if we make and choose the plan? Or if you, whoever is choosing, Hesse Committee choosing Plan Six for us? What happened to the freedom of speech for the individual of the United States or us as voting members? I'm speaking for Wingate High School, Wingate Elementary and the parents of each chapter that we represent. We go to each chapter and we do reports of what's happening, whether it's through email, telephone, personal, or either at the chapters. And with these schools, they have their own budget, each one of them. And I'm a real stickler of budgets. Uh, I'm always asking questions, why this amount? Why is this in the negative? Why is this? Why is that? Now, if we put one representative from each, um, area of school for Wingate, it's going to be from Chetukla, Mariana Lake, Pinedale, um, Ayambato, Church Rock, that area, and we're going to have five individuals representing. And it's just going to create more chaos. It's not going to make no difference. And in our children's education, we're just going to hurt them. We're going to hurt our parents. There is not going to be a lot of involvement because of this apportionment plan that's being proposed. I'm very against it. I'm not for it because it's a violation of some of our rights as a voting member. And it seems like Hesse has been doing that by themselves of making recommendations and legislations and doing their own thing without the people's voice out here at the local level. Yet everything is being approved through the Winderock, through the legislation, through the executive offices without coming back to the local level. We need to keep it the way it is. We need to leave it alone because so far things are going well. Why is it that we need to change? It's not going to change much. Maybe it'll help the Hesse Committee with more of, um, gear to make more plans to damage the education plan, the educational plan, the educational rights for our students. Sheehiahe, uh, bekishin shli do, do ehiahe insenda hala nixi, uh, lahot a, eh, chunneba ndahuit akwede. On the legis, LGA, no, Local Governance Act, ehia shang, eh shee hajago, do bahwin tida. On nixide yahay ade, on nixide ala, ala da, eh, kude chapter house and the council minute on da khatahajashin, atahaskre, oh, ndadi chho, tino b'ehata adzhio yo on dalwo. Akwa aden, on xide endah, akude, hajoo ndatleto, leave it the way it is. That's what I'm going to say for Wingate Elementary and Eastern Agency and Wingate High School. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan. Is there anyone else who would like to provide a recommendation or have a comment or state a reason at this time? Do we have anyone from Office of Legislative Council on the call?
Uh, yes, there is. Um, this is Ron Haven from the Office of Legislative Council. I I I just got on the call just a minute ago.
Hello, Mr. Haven. Um, we have a Mr. David Gomez that has several questions in regards to the legal basis of this apportionment plan. Mr. Gomez?
Yes. Hello.
Hello.
Hi. Hello, Mr. Haven. It's been a while since I've seen you. Hope you're doing well.
I hope you're doing well as well, Mr. Gomez.
Good. Uh, you know, um, as this process is going along, uh, we had some questions about uh, about how this uh, this whole thing came about. Well, one of the questions that some of the grad schools that I represent have is what the legal basis is for a school board regionalization plan when um, regionalization is not included within the the text of uh, eleven NNC eleven. If you look at eleven NNC eleven and then also the entirety of uh, section uh, of Title Ten, it refers to local community school boards, but there's no mention of regional school boards.
Um, uh, i- is that the extent of your question there, Mr. Gomez?
Well, that's, that's one of them. That's the primary question that I had. Another question I had is uh, uh, regarding the the court's decision on uh, on uh, casting votes in in which the court said that uh, it would permit uh, voters to withdraw their votes after they were cast once they had a chance to take a look at uh, at uh, Plan Six. And I don't see any provision in Title Eleven that that permits that to people to withdraw their votes once they've been cast.
Okay, um, we, um, uh, if if that's it, let me go ahead and uh, to make an effort to uh, address your concerns here. Um, pursuant to um, uh, the court order, uh, this is under WRCV fifty-five twenty, and I have uh, a copy of that I I pulled just now. And and uh, basically, um, uh, you're asking about provisions under um, Title Eleven um, and also uh, the basis of the school board plan. Now, essentially, um, uh, Hesse has been uh, uh, conducting so uh, uh, these hearings. Uh, hearings are being conducted at at its direction and essentially, uh, what has occurred in the uh, um, in the past is is that certainly there has been a a lawsuit that was filed. And essentially, what we're doing is that, um, uh, the court has determined that we need to go back and 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 consult, uh, provide uh, some input from the community members. Um, a- a- and and allow then to provide uh, testimony at 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 some of these uh, hearings that are gonna be uh, conducted, that are in fact being conducted, and also allow uh, a comment period at least sixty days. A- and that's the basis for why uh, these uh, hearings are 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 taking place. Um, related to that i- is um, under Navajo Nation uh, code, in- including um, um, per uh, Title Two, uh, there are provisions that al- allow uh, standing committees, uh, certain authority, uh, some of them p- pertain, like for example, in this case, uh, 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 elections. Um, uh, a- a- and if you look at Title um, eleven, um, under the election code, it does indicate that apportionment plans are conducted every um, uh, four years, um, four years at at the beginning of um, uh, prior to the schools, um, school board's uh, assuming office, uh, there's provisions in the election code that does uh, require the Health Education Human Services Committee uh, to to begin formulating um, uh, a plan, a plan for a school board and and apportion, uh, some of these positions. And and the criteria certainly i- i- is set in the election code, yes, and and they have taken uh, the criteria i- into account and 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 develop uh, some of the plans here and and decided upon a Plan Six that that meets the needs of uh, the Navajo Nation and also uh, taken into account uh, the the requirements of the election code insofar as-
Well, please mute your phones.
Okay, and and the other portion here, I believe, addresses the uh, uh, court's decision. And I believe that the portion that I have uh, caught is is a- and I didn't catch all of it, Mr. Gomez. I do apologize. Uh, you were not coming in too clear. Under the court order, there is reference to to votes um, that have been cast a- and and you asked what authority there is uh, for voters uh, to withdraw their votes. And um, I I think your point is made that where in the election code does it authorize uh, voters to withdraw their votes. And essentially, I I don't really, um, I the only thing, my response here i- is that the court has in fact ordered this a- and we are going to abide by that uh, order a- and and um, allow um, this particular process to take place. Now, this will take place upon um, proceedings that are currently taking place now with respect to the apportionment plan comments, okay? There's gonna be another period of time within which uh, that portion will be addressed, okay? So that's where that um, aspect of this process will take place. And and essentially, we've been ordered to do that by the courts. And and wherein the election code does that appear, um, I, the only thing I can tell you right now is that, yeah, we uh, um, there is a lawsuit and this is all part of the orders that we have been uh, asked to comply with, and we certainly are gonna go comply with these orders. So that's the extent, and I do apologize for the uh, extensive uh, response to that. So I'm gonna go ahead and finish there and thank you very much.
Thank you, Ron. Mr. Gomez, you can always submit your written comment as we have previously stated. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And I appreciate Mr. Haven uh, joining us and offering his expertise on these matters.
Is there anyone else who would like to provide a comment or recommendation or state a reason at this time?
Yes. I will. Yes.
Ma'am, um, can you state your name for the record? You have five minutes.
Yes, this is Valerie Hasisa, and I am a parent. And I do have two kids that go to a BI E school and um, I really don't like what the Hesse Committee's doing about this school board reapportionment plan. From previous, I know we went to public chapter uh, meetings and there was a lot of parents that spoke their their mind, like what they agreed on that Plan Four A. So I thought at that time, things were going okay until now I heard about this one again. And I really don't like it. And um, I'm sure a lot of parents will not like all the changes that are gonna be made. And a parent as myself, I'm not gonna be driving so far to attend a board meeting. And all the pairs are not able to drive. Some of them don't even have vehicles. So there are a lot of issues that will probably happen. And look at some of our headstarts. They're not in full, um, they're not providing services. So I think that I oppose this Plan Six and leave everything the way it is in our community. Our school is running better. It's like really good. Um, my kids have been in the face program. Now, my oldest is in seventh grade. And they're academic wise, they are really doing awesome. And I like the way our school is. So leave everything the way it is and not mess with our schools. Focus on something else besides our schools. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else who would like to provide a comment or recommendation at this time? Is there anyone else who would like to provide a recommendation or state a reason or a comment at this time?
Hello, this is Jordan Atty from Tohoduli.
Hello, Ms. Atty. You have five minutes, sir.
I'm really quick, just just FYI, you muted everyone. So those of you who are trying to speak, you would have to press star six to unmute. Um, I ha- I just pressed star six, um. So as a registered voter of the Tohoduli community, I wanted to express my opposition in selecting this Plan Six school board reapportionment plan. Uh, the school board reapportionment plan is not in accordance with the election code Navo, um, Title Ten. Um, which is what this really is. It's a, it's an election issue, not an educational issue. So if you notice in the provisions that you have presented, it comes from Title Eleven. So to elaborate on my comment, and how it's not in accordance with Title Eleven, you have sixty-seven schools on Navajo Nation. The election code states that there has to be a minimum of three school board members for each school with a max of seven. This means there should be at least two hundred and one school board members or a max of three hundred and thirty-five. Another violation in this apportionment plan says that each chapter will be represented. The at-large positions take takes away this representation. If you look at the plan for Eastern Agency, one at-large representative is for Thiru, Baca, and Smith Lake. When Thiru wins because of its size, you don't have representation at Baca or Smith Lake. And the other school board um, group will be the be between Thiru and Gallop. When one of them win, there's gonna, you're gonna lose a representation for seventeen of the other chapters. So there's really no fairness um, in in as far as a chapter representation with this Plan Six. If you think of our other reps such as the Board of Election, Board of Education, and even our council delegate at the Tohoduli level, we don't receive any reports from them. So imagine this at the school board level. You're gonna get nothing from, let's say if I was from Thiru, I'm not gonna be like Baca Pruitt, Smith Lake, they're not gonna be receiving reports. And I'm pretty sure they're not receiving reports right now. So how do we hold them accountable? How will we, how would we use? How would um, we hold these at-large positions accountable? I'm sure the answer is gonna be vote for someone new in the new election, but if you really think about it, we're stuck with these representatives for two plus years and in this case, four years. So to conclude, this is a matter, this is a matter of stripping Navajo citizens' rights and their voicing, um, their voice at the local level. My recommendation would be go, go work with, work with the stakeholders and don't make it top-heavy, which is what this really is. This plan is not a plan of the Navajo Nation um, citizens. It's a plan of the Educational Department. Now, I want to reiterate, this is not an educational issue, it's an election issue. So so and it's pretty obvious that with the previous comments and questions that were asked, this, there's no clear rationale in creating this plan. So I just wanted to thank you for the comments and I hope um, there's more comments uh, coming and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Atty. Is there anyone else who would like to make a comment, a recommendation, or state a reason at this time?
Hello.
Hello.
Can you hear me?
Um, can you speak a little bit louder, ma'am?
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, please state your name for the record and you have five minutes.
Okay, uh, my name is Erlene Henderson. I'm from Pueblo-Pentado Community School. Um, I'm a school board. I'm also a a parent and grandma. I would like to I would like to say a a comment on this um, board apport- apportionment plan. Uh, it uh, we discussed this about two, two years ago or three years ago as a group within Eastern Agency. And we all went with Plan Four. We didn't go with Plan Six. It was Plan Four, which is um, the way it is right now. I was happy. Ah, when the ah, what aid on this, that be need. Okay, I know the other agency, don't put a bean need. School board, gee, when the ah, at the hands, honey, gee, ah, the hands, car, or let what, oh, need. Okay, when it came to Winderock, Hessa, then the house, pan, to the, the, need, so. They didn't listen to us. The local level, they'll be east, ah, the. And here they just uh, got all the information and recommendations from Doty, Department of Education. The ah, just eh, yeah, they east, ah, given the hat, ah, gee, but ah, the. Okay, could a local level, the eh, then, don't hit east, ah, the. Okay, could almost a city, in the, in the council delegate, huh, a store, uh, twenty-four, Elia. At the new council delegate, do they, in the, could a chapter level, the. There is a huge lack of communication. There is no report for the past two, three years. Ah, eh, ah, and today, ah, let, ah, me, hey, coulda. Don't he, ah, na, what, the, don't he, eh, ah, the, ah, then. So they need to listen, listen to us at the local level. Ah, they, ah, could they, yeah, ah, June, the, ah, the, ah. Okay, speak up. Board, uh, apportion Plan 6, ah, ninnigi, eh, do shall, do shall, ah, what, eh, the, ah, yes, eh. Though, be, ah, the, did, eh. accord. Need reports. I don't know. The deal of communication again. Eh, the I oppose. Totally opposed Plan Six. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to provide a comment, a recommendation, or state a reason at this time?
Hello.
Hello.
Hello, I'd like to speak.
Yes, um, please state your name for the record, organization that you're representing, and you have five minutes, ma'am.
My name is Sarah Jackson, and I'm a school board member for um, Mariano Lake, Pinedale, and Smith Lake. Um, I just want to say that I too oppose the Plan Six that you are wanting to put in place. My reason is like the other ladies said, there's no communication from your, from your department, Doty. They don't come out and see what's going on at the schools. They, they say that they're gonna do this, or they're gonna do that, but we don't see them. And the other thing is, our council delegates don't even come to see a lot of our chapters. How is this Plan Six gonna work if we have only one representative for about four or five schools? It's not gonna work. So we need to stick to our, our plan for, and also these council delegates need to listen to the community. We're the voters. Our commu- our community voted us in. And we need that respect. And it, it looks to me like you're violating our voting rights if you're doing, if you're gonna do this. So that's the reason why you guys are, were taken out of court, whoever you are, were taken out of court because you weren't ready. Your, your plans weren't ready. You didn't follow the, the sixty day, um, public hearing. All of that's going on. How is this gonna work even now? Um, Doty's in charge of Head Start, and Head Start's going down. Um, their billings are going down, their bills are not paid on time. So I think we should just stick with Plan Six. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. I see a hand raised, uh, modo G seven. If you could please state your name for the record, and then you have five minutes.
Yeah, they, uh, say Rick Parian, she Elmo. Top Dee couldi school boardi election. The other day, there was a comment Monday. The guy said, think of your, your kids, not politics. To me, he's not thinking of our kids right now. The school board, you're cutting them, you're cutting representation from our kids' voice. You're cutting them at the knees. I wonder what's the motive behind this? I cannot, so the council delegates should have learned their lesson by now. They told us that we'll get more money to the people if we cut the council delegate down to fifty, twenty-five. It seems like the funding is still the same, the spending is still the same. They should learn their lesson by now. The, 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 the spending will still be the same, but our kids' representation will be chopped at the knees. We should be uh, asking ourselves, how can we improve the education system? Instead, we're going backwards. She did talk comments. And I, and, and this is really, really put my school at this over here uh, 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 behind. This pandemic showed us that our kids don't even meet the minimum requirement of, of, of education. That's what our concern should be, instead of money. Though I quote a comment.
Yeah, Mr. Padilla. Is there anyone else who would like to make a comment, recommendation, or state a reason at this time? Yes, I see a hand that's raised, Ms. Kathleen Sosie. Please state your name and your organization, and then you have five minutes, ma'am.
My name is Kathleen Sosie, and I represent Code Day School and a member of the the Bozba Executive Board. I am learning this, um, uh, public hearing on his reportionment. The public, and I was there, and so the other community members were there at the Shebra chapter. There, uh, we were not aware of Plan Six, and Matthew So had brought that upon us at the last minute and with the election board. So the election board had nothing to do with that. That's what we were told. And so the majority of these public hearings, we have recordings, and there's public records, um, that we have in the Bozba, and we had our own recorder. So we have all the evidence, and I don't know where this, um, Plan Six came about. And evidently, it was Doty's plan. So why is Doty taking control of this instead of Hesse? Hesse is letting Doty control them, the way I look at it. And then, um, there's a young lady that was talking about how each representative are not gonna be representing every school. And that is true, because a lot of these new representatives will not know about the schools, about the communities, what their needs are. And then, this is all about election. It's not about education, it's about election. So I don't know what Doty is trying to do. And I, we strongly oppose that Plan Six. So we do have resolution from the chapter, from the school, the agency board, and then the community agency, and also the, the Nebel class school board organization. We have all those resol- resolution opposing Plan Six. What more do they want? So, and it is not fair, because all council delegates are just listening to Plan Six. Because all these other plans were there. And Plan, um, Plan Four A, we were, that's the one that the public had chose. So I am totally opposed on Plan Six. Thank you for giving me this time.
Thank you, Ms. Sosie. Is there anyone else who would like to provide a comment, a recommendation, or state a reason at this time? Yes, I see a hand that's raised. Montoya, last name.
Oh, yeah, eh, my name is
You have five minutes, ma'am, Ms. Montoya.
Yeah. She not I am the chapter president for Torreon Starlight Chapter. I don't our Torreon Day School. School board member. She wants hashit public hearing. Oh, eh, yeah, the um, election. Do candidates. This is how many you will pick. Don't you don't need. I don't eh, um, we did as we were instructed. I don't eh, yeah, do you don't need. You have, you have votes. Accord. If you want to take back your vote. Be I don't um, Health and Education Human Services Committee. Representative eh, do I Dee I don't I Dee I representative. I she Plan Six. She do who not not I don't I don't change I Their leadership has been instilled in our community. Oh, but I don't I don't I don't I And now I'm in the position that I'm in. I don't know. Dee that do eh, she you accord. The Plan Six. No Dee in plain Navajo. I Why are you wanting to change this? I'm making that question to the committee, and also because it, it is a recommendation of the Department of the Education.
Thank you, Ms. Montoya. Is there anyone else who would like to make a comment, a recommendation, or state a reason at this time? Or Mr. So, would you like to say anything? Mr. Matthew So, would you like to say anything?
Yeah, I just, I also want to add for the record that one of the comments has come up is regard to Plan Four A. For those who, um, the Plan Four A, which is apparently favor, favored by a lot of school boards, that was also developed by Department of Education based on what's been submitted. So I just want to make that clear. So you, you get, it, it appears that the Department of Education has been unfairly bashed. But the plan that apparently a lot of school boards like was developed by the Department of Education.
Thank you, Mr. So. Is there anyone else who would like to make a comment, recommendation, or state a comment at this time? Yes, I see a last name, Costello. Um, can you please state your name, the organization you represent, and you have five minutes?
I she on Torreon chapter. I'm a registered voter. The Plan Six. Eh, um, I don't approve it for my community where I'm registered. Quite some of my relatives. Do, do you understand what you voted for back in the election that, that took place in twenty twenty? The because it states Eastern Navajo School vote for two. Eh, she hates. Oh, no, no, yeah, Eastern Navajo, no. In our region, in Crown Point Agency. It means for the whole agency. I the communities. It represents. Put case, the elderly's. Our relatives. I'm not not accord. Dee the constituents. It needs to be identified. She I'm a school administrator. Accord. If we combine schools. Torreon Day School. Not I don't I don't They're all separate communities. It's a distance. But not our, our, our local community. I don't budgets. Every school has their own separate budget. Doc school administrator. Personal policies and procedures. And every school is different. So on case. Dee board meeting. No. It takes, it doesn't take one hour. Each community is different. It's based on the student needs. It's based on the parent needs. So school board members are elected. They represent the community. So if we reduce the number of community members, I don't like in Torreon Agency, or Eastern Navajo. Then Dee It's not a true representative for our kids in the community. I, I had nieces and nephews that went to school there at This is not going to work for our community member, and as a school administrator, I oppose Plan Six. Yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Costello, Costello. Is there anyone else who would like to provide a recommendation, state a reason or a comment at this time? Is there anyone else who would like to provide a reason? State a comment or recommendation at this time? If you are not commenting, please mute your phones. Is there anyone who would like to state a reason or comment or a recommendation at this time?
Hello, good afternoon. My name is Paulina Beta.
Hello, Ms. Beta. You have five minutes. Please state your name for the record and the organization that you represent.
Thank you. My name is Paulina Beta, and I am a voter for the Torjolay Community. I'm also a parent of two elementary age children who attend the local community school, Torjolay Community School. And I'm the current vice president of our Torjolay Community School Board. Thank you. The comment I'd like to make are actually around several points. Um, I think one of the first ones I'd like to address, though, is Mr. Slater's comment and Doty's stance on this issue that their primary purpose and reason for this is to address nepotism, favoritism, and those type of issues that have been happening at the local school board level. My comment is that, yes, I agree that that does happen on some school boards. It happens in a lot of communities, and it happens in a lot of organizations. And I can say that at one time it did happen at Torjolay Community School. We were controlled by three different families who ran that school for a number of years. But most recently, in the two thousand sixteen election, when a new, um, three board members had joined two previous board members, that shifted, the dead, the dynamic changed. There was more accountability, there were more questions asked, there was more um, bringing to the surface of these issues and addressing these issues. And I can say that it was not a quick process. It did take time, and we were able to shift that. Today, our school board, our school is operating in a very positive manner. We can say with certainty that all of our employees have been hired ethically, have background checks, have met full credentials. Our audits are favorable. We are one of the lowest spending boards, although we are over a hundred miles away from Wonder Rock where we would conduct a lot of business. And I think that it all depends on the type of board that you have in there. And our board is very active with the Bozba and other school board associations. We challenge ourselves to have ethical practices and follow the policies and procedures and abide by the law. And I think that other boards have that potential, too. So for first, I'd like to address those nepotism comments and say, yes, they happen, they're everywhere, but our school is, is an example of that change and that shift that can happen. Um, secondly, I'd like to make a comment that I think by reducing the number of school boards, um, you really take away the voice from the community. And I think in some of the other arguments that were made where some schools did not have any people running for office. Um, I believe that, um, Doty, other organizations, Navajo Nation Board of Education can do outreach to colleges through ANSA. They can recruit current college students to run for these board positions, to bring new ideas, to give life to their community schools. Because we, as the younger generation and who are in school or recently out of school, know the challenges. We know how we should best prepare our youth for college, for higher education, or trade programs, or even the military. I believe that, um, there, an outreach needs to be done to have a diverse group of people serving on these boards. I do not believe that reducing them is the best solution. I'd like to keep the community, local community voice there. Um, I do understand that there was also a comment made about the satellite communities keeping their five-member boards. And although that's favorable for me and my community, I'd like to, um, say that I advocate that all communities should stay the way they were before this happened and have their full representation. Um, I do not think that Torjolay is in a position to speak for Alamo, or Alamo's in a position to speak for Reima, or we're in a position to speak for any other community. Um, I will say that as a parent, I enjoy that I can go down to my local school, talk with our parent advisory committee, who's very active, advocate for, um, things for my child's classroom or opportunities that they have, and then also, um, address concerns with my local CSA and our board.
Ms. Beta?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, thank you so much for your comment.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to provide a comment, state a reason, or recommendation at this time? Is there anyone who would like to provide a comment, a reason, or a recommendation at this time? Is there anyone who would like to provide a reason, state a comment, or a recommendation at this time? If there are no more comments or recommendations or reasons, we'll go ahead and move on down to close of the public hearing. Mr. Matthew So, do you have anything that you want to say at this time?
Um, no, we don't at this moment. Um, just to, just to be clear that there is a, a comment, a place where you can send a comment, and that's the Health, Education, Human Services Committee. Attention, School Board of Portman. Uh, the mail address is P O Box six seventy, Winderock, Arizona, eight six five one five dash zero six seventy. And there's also a number where you can fax your comments to, or written statements, and that's the nine two eight eight seven one seven four seven four. There's also a specific email address that has been created to ensure that all your comments go to a, a, a specific location and not, not put in with all the other, uh, comment places. And the address is schoolboard@navajo-innocent.gov. The address again is schoolboard@navajo-innocent.gov.
Thank you, Mr. So. In addition, we will continue having both in-person meetings and Zoom meetings tomorrow, August twenty-seven, twenty twenty-one. The in-person meeting is gonna be held at Fort Defiance Chapter from nine o'clock to twelve o'clock. And then we will have the Zoom meeting from one o'clock to three o'clock. Thank you so much for attending. I appreciate your participation and your attendance in this virtual public hearing.